For those who are joining us online, and this is the November 16th meeting of the Board of Douglas County Commissioners, this is our work session. Typically, our work sessions are to receive information only. We don't take any public comment during work session. We have no action during work session. And today, we have a presentation by DECA's Transitional Housing, an update from them. And I'll turn it over to Jill Jollaker to introduce our guests.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm happy to introduce Lori Alvarado, the Executive Director of DECA, and Ed Lobdell. Ed, I can't remember your title right now, but I'm sure you'll hear that from him. They're going to provide you with an update on their transitional housing project that, as outlined in my cover memo, was the proposal to support this project was submitted through the County's American Rescue Plan Act solicitation earlier this year. It was identified as a great source of funding for some one-time funding that the county will have available from the Behavioral Health Sales Tax, which is absolutely spot on, because I think, as many of you know, DECA has been a member of the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition and a partner to Douglas County for as long as I've been involved in this work and worked for Douglas County. They've been one of our best partners. And we've also been talking about the plan to expand transitional housing on the First Step campus for as long as I've been engaged in partnerships with DECA and in the supportive housing space. I think it's important to note, and I did in the memo as well, that the full request that they submitted for the American Rescue Plan Act funds is attached in the meeting information or the agenda. But also, I wanted to highlight how important this project, the potential this project has to contributing to the needs assessment information that was collected by the Corporation for Supportive Housing earlier this year and documenting the population, the unique populations of folks that stand to benefit from an expansion of supportive housing. I think the project that you're going to hear about today will make a substantial contribution to that. And with that, I will hand it off to Lori to kick things off.
Great. Thank you, Jill. Yes, Ed Lobdell is with us today. He is Director of Substance Use Services for DECA here in Douglas County. I will point to a couple of people behind me. I have Russ Harding with us, who is our Chief Operating Officer, and then Kalia Evans, who is our newly hired Chief Behavioral Health Officer. And she's in Day 11, so she's not going to, we're not going to have her come up and do this. Normally, she would, but Ed has been intricately involved in this project. I wanted to just start by a quick update or a quick connection to what Jill talked about in regards to the assessment that we have in the county around housing. We know that this project that we'll be talking about specifically relates to two vulnerable populations, populations that, to our knowledge, there are no housing projects specifically targeted at. That would be women and children and people with substance use disorder diagnosis. So that is our specific target audience. I won't spend a lot of time telling you what DECA does. I think you know what we do and have been involved with us before. I decided to go old school today and give you actual handouts that you can touch, but it does a really nice job of telling you about our project. So we're just going to do a brief overview of the project to talk a little bit about where we are with that project and then highlight a couple of challenges. So the first couple of pages is really just about DECA and where we provide services. If you move to page four, that is really where we start talking about our housing project. This project is meant to be transitional housing. So six to nine months of housing as women and children and those with a diagnosed substance use disorder would live, they would transition then into the community for more permanent housing. We know that, that people who have a substance use disorder, keeping them connected to services as long as possible and in an environment that supports their sobriety and recovery, we know is contributes much, much more to their continued sobriety and their continued recovery. So this housing project is proposed to be on our site, really next door to our Women's Treatment Center. It doesn't mean that only women would live there, women and children. Obviously, if there are people with a substance use disorder that don't have children or aren't necessarily in that target population that we currently serve, doesn't mean they would not be in the housing. One of the criteria that we will set for housing is their continued engagement in treatment. The longer they engage in treatment, the longer they usually, the more likely they are to recover. What we are proposing to build at this point is eight to 10 duplex-type residences, so two units per residence with two-bedroom, two-bath. So the idea there is women and children, room for women and children. Also, opportunity for family, also opportunity for perhaps two women who are in recovery to live in a unit together. So that is our proposed effort at this time. We've done a very preliminary work on what those would cost, what they would look like, and where we're headed. So we do know, you can turn the page and see that there is just a real brief floor plan, so you can see. I'm not saying this is exactly what we would build, but this is where we have landed at this point. Obviously, once we bid the project, you know how that goes. When you bid projects, contractors tend to help you think through some other things. But I would suggest that you think very much like the cottages on the recovery campus, that a lot of built-in kinds of furniture and things, because we also know that people who would be moving in here may not have those kinds of resources, and that allows us to provide that without a lot of moving in and moving out and all of that. You also see on page six there, we have begun a capital campaign. And the money that we are talking about here through the Behavioral Health Tax would be part of that capital campaign. So we intend to raise, you see there, 3.2 million, 3,250,000 for the actual construction. That's what we believe would be the construction. We also have targeted $300,000 for, for some backstop and programming, and I will talk about programming in a minute, because it's a bit of a challenge for our audience. And then we, in that campaign, also have earmarked $450,000 that we would then put into an endowment type to deal with longer-term repairs, roofs, HVAC, those things that start coming into play eight, 10 years down the road. We want to be able to sustain these units so that they are in good repair. So this is kind of the plan that we have in place for, for our capital right now. So as we look at capital, we will be looking at, obviously, public, public sources through City of Lawrence as well as the county. We also are looking at foundation funding, but some national foundations who invest in capital kinds of campaigns for these efforts. Private fundraising, and then DECA will also be putting in some money to the capital campaign. So that gives you a little bit of where we're headed. We officially soft, a soft launch in September of our capital campaign. We're currently working with a fundraising contractor to help us do this well, so that we were prepared for all of the hiccups that might come through a process. So then that leads us to programming, which I will have Ed talk a little bit about, but I want to set the stage a little bit. When I talk about programming, I'm not talking, I really should talk about the housing costs. They will remain in treatment, as I said, so we know that we can use our traditional funding sources for therapy, for peer supports, those kinds of case management, those kinds of things that are normally a part of a treatment episode. Having housing is a different twist, and DECA has not ever done this before. So this is our foray into figuring this out. There are some, for Medicaid, there are some funding available that you can bill Medicaid for housing supports. That is about a third of DECA's business. So two-thirds of our clients likely are going to come with no real funding source for the housing. So we've done some work. Obviously, we're going to fundraise some money. That will not, that's backstop. We know that's not, 300,000 won't last long in housing. Trying to build a bit of a cushion, so as we build our housing supports, we have a bit to grow on or to, to help us if some funding source changes. We also know that our clients, a great number of them, are ineligible for public housing and Section 8 vouchers because of a background, criminal background issue. And so some of the traditional supports for our lower-income residents are not available to this population. So that creates a bit of a challenge where maybe some others, other service agencies don't encounter. It's a regular happening for us. So we are looking at what's, what's available. We've been talking to the state about a pilot project. No one else in the state of Kansas has specific housing for women and children and those in recovery. There are pockets of that, but to have a whole housing section, neighborhood, that does not exist in Kansas. So we're talking to the state about some pilot money, knowing that pilot money doesn't go on forever. So thinking through what that might look like. We also have been talking to, in fact, I will, I'm trying to get on schedules with our federal senators and their health policy analysts currently before the federal government with the Substance Use Disorder Block Grant is a proposal for a fairly significant increase in funding due to the opioid crisis and some other challenges that are facing us nationally. Along with that would be a set aside for housing. There's never been a set aside for federal Substance Use Disorder Block Grant. So I have been asked by a couple of our national advocacy partners to talk with our two senators who both sit on the Help Committee, which will consider this funding. So should that go through, that block grant money would become available fall of 2024, with the fiscal year fall 2024. Again, that will be, as I figure, the money probably less than $300,000 or $400,000 for the whole state to start with. So again, I'm like, there's some money available, but I'm not sure that will be enough. So we continue to look at options for the housing. As we continue to put a bit of a performa together, our Board of Directors is exercising caution, which I think is very, very important. The last thing we want to do is build housing, and then we have no way to put people in housing and support the housing. So we are continuing to put together a performa so that we can talk about how to pay for that, and I would like to tell you that is done. It is not done. As we think about federal and state funding, those are the two areas that we've done some work on. Of course, fundraising will be part of that as well. So we're kind of piecing together how we would pay for the housing. So just, I'm just being completely transparent. It's not done yet, so we continue to work on that. With that, I'm going to stop and let Ed talk a little bit about what we would envision the residents of this housing units, the housing units, what kind of services they would receive, what they might have in continuing their recovery.
Thank you, Lori. So yeah, talking about, Lori mentioned that all, everyone in these housing units would be, you know, engaged in some sort of treatment with DECA as well. And there's really no wrong door to that. Individuals may come from our outpatient clinic, they may come from a residential center stepping down into this housing unit after completing residential treatment. They may be Douglas County residents that were here all along and then came to us through our residential center or outpatient clinic, or people that are seeking to relocate to Lawrence because they didn't have the resources where they came from, you know, in New Dora or Baldwin or something. And that process, of course, starts out with comprehensive assessment to make sure that their treatment is individualized. So everyone's treatment is going to be individualized. That may be, you know, them attending treatment three to five days a week at first while they're in this setting. And everyone's going to be doing group therapy, individual therapy, could be doing family therapy. And then as time goes on, as they're more successful, as they're reintegrating more into the community, going to work, going to appointments, going to meetings, their treatment then would, would reduce to, as they're being successful. So it could reduce to, you know, just a few hours a week, just a group a week or something like that. So that, that involves, you know, therapists, professional counselors. We, we hope to also engage them with peer support and in the peer support and the therapist's kind of tackling case management needs. We want to make sure that they're engaged to in all the other treatment resources around, so making sure they're engaged with Burton Ash or they're engaged with the Willow or other services that they may need to maintain their success, you know, out there in the real world.
One of the positives that we love about this, the housing will be located on our site, and everyone who is engaged in that housing unit will also have access to our childcare that is onsite, just literally across the street. So we think that's an added benefit to the, the housing picture. We know childcare is also an issue in Douglas County. And so having our residents have access very close to their residents to be able to continue their child in childcare. So we partner with Positive Bright Start. They manage our childcare, and we appreciate that partnership and would continue to connect those who needed or wanted childcare at that facility, we would make that available. I think the other thing that I, I continue to hear in the community is just, how do we begin to build a bit of a community around these residents? Should we be fortunate enough to raise the money that we would like to raise? One of the attributes we would like to build is a bit of a community room or community center as part. It won't be big, small, but the idea is it gives them, residents, a gathering place. We would have a, an office for therapy, so if they chose to have therapy there, we could do that. A place for peers to land and, and provide that support. And I would see this as a great option for the residents to have a birthday party or a potluck gathering for holidays or special occasions. I'm not telling you that we will be successful in doing that, but one of the things we want to do is to begin to build a community around these residents. So when they transition to the community and into permanent housing, they understand the value that a sense of community can bring to their support and recovery. The final thing I would say is DECA is not good at managing apartments, that is, or whatever, managing housing, collecting rents, that is not our specialty. Nor do I really want to spend a lot of overhead trying to figure out how to make that our specialty. So our plan is to partner with someone in the community who, an organization who has that specialty, so we would be contracting with them to collect rents. The idea is that over time, there would be subsidized rent, and then they would grow as they are employed, as they begin to learn budgeting, that rent would progressively move upwards so that when they're ready to transition into the community, it's not huge gap in what they're used to paying for rent and what they will pay in more permanent housing. But we will be contracting with an entity to collect rents and do basic maintenance of the facilities or the, the units. Just easier to do it with people who know how to do it than to learn it. So that's, I think we will stop for a little bit and see what questions you all might have.
So Commissioner Kelly, a couple of questions. Can you give us sort of a timeline? You know, time in the residential facility, time that they may be in supportive housing, and then how long till they move to permanent housing? Have you thought about that at all?
Yeah, if you want to take that.
Sure. So somebody is typically in residential treatment for about 21 to 28 days. There may be some opportunity for some extended residential programs that we offer at, at First Step. And then, like Lori mentioned earlier, probably envision them being in these housing units and treatment for about six to nine months following that. During that time, we, we might help them transition into, you know, more permanent solutions here in the, in the county, in the city. But they would continue in treatment even long after that, like Lori mentioned. You know, we, we know that research shows that the longer somebody's in treatment, the more likely they are to be successful. So as they, they transition, as they get comfortable, as they find their own space, then they can transition into outpatient services, so, where they might be for another six months to a year, even after that.
And you work with putting people in permanent housing now, after they're in residential treatment, right?
We do our best. We, again, the challenge is affordable housing, especially with a lot of our clients who are qualified in the public housing support. So generally, we're transitioning them now into Oxford House settings, so we're living settings. I will tell you that those settings are not ideal, and in fact, I'm not sure that children can go into those facilities.
Very limited opportunities for children, yeah.
And so if, if a mom has children, our ability to place them in a community in affordable settings are very limited. So that's why we need to build them up into employment, helping them with budgets so that then after this nine-month period of time, they're more ready to turn, transition to more permanent.
That's a lot to accomplish in the six to nine months.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially in terms of ramping up rent along, finding jobs, making budgets, it's a lot to accomplish.
Yes, we know. We also know that there's a certain time period for some offenses that after a certain time period, they become eligible for other funding. That's not, I can't tell you which offenses and how long, but they're individualized. There might be opportunities for them to then plug into some of the more public funding sources.
Well, you know, I got to tour your facility, and it was, it was wonderful. Thank you. And so that, the childcare center, what kind of capacity do you have there to take? And it's wonderful to have that. It's a great piece of the puzzle, and also that it would be available for the transitional housing also. What capacity do you have to add six to 10 units worth of potential kids to that facility?
At this point, we have capacity. That changes on a daily basis, a weekly basis, but at this point, we have capacity, and it seems we will have some capacity in the future. It depends on being able to hire qualified teachers, which seems to be a challenge. But currently, there is.
Space. Teachers more than space is the issue.
Right.
You mentioned, you know, the priority for clients would be women, women with children. How do you prioritize clients coming in? I imagine there will be far more demand than you can satisfy. So what's the thought process there?
As we think about priorities, I will be completely honest, we don't have our priority list all set up. But our priority list would be women with children, because there are less safe environments for women to take their children into housing areas. Oxford Houses, some of those places just don't work. And so our priority would be women and children, and then we would move from there. Obviously, we already do work with Family Promise and some other great community partners to place women and children right now. The, the, the available units for that are a challenge, but we will continue to work with our partners for women and children. I would, I would guess it will mainly be women and children, if I had my guess, based on numbers and availability of units.
Well, I know DECA also works beyond Douglas County. Is there a priority for, for these units for Douglas County residents or someone with a tie to Douglas County?
Absolutely. We would, Douglas County residents and then those who have like claimed that this is their relocation, because our, our women's facility is statewide facility, so we take women from across the state. A good majority of them go back to where, those who are outside of Douglas County, a good majority of them go back to where they came from, because that's where their natural support system is, or we hope their natural support system is. A few choose to relocate to Douglas County because of their treatment experience, because they perhaps have a case manager who's been able to make connections for employment or ongoing school, what, whatever those next plans are. That Douglas County would absolutely be part of that priority.
I think another priority too would be people that couldn't access other resources, right? So like Lori mentioned, can't go through any federal housing programs because they have an eviction or because they have a drug charge on their criminal background. We would want to prioritize those people too who can't. There are no other existing resources for them.
And I assume people coming out of your residential treatment would maybe be a priority, since you're
Absolutely.
already in charge of where they connect.
Well, they've already connected, so absolutely. I think that would be one of the top criteria as well.
What percentage of folks do you place in residential, you know, permanent housing?
It's a really good question, and it's kind of complicated. Like Lori mentioned, you know, our catchment area is the state. So we get women that, that go back to where they came from. Of the people that are Douglas County residents that come to us first, a huge majority of them are people that we need to help find safe, affordable housing. Very few of them have those resources to go back and live with another family member or live with somebody else. So definitely a big majority of those. We are helping them get into an Oxford House or helping them with a referral to care coordination or family promise or.
But you don't have a percentage of that. I mean, one of the things I'm, this is why I'm going with this is the idea is that if we provide supportive housing, treatment longer term, to be able to get jobs, get more established, maybe a charge of jobs, you know, those types of things. And so I'm just thinking about indicators that we would use coming out of, you know, what is that indicator that we would use coming out of treatment versus coming out of treatment, having supportive housing, still in treatment? And then, you know, would we expect higher rates of, you know, housing? Even moving on to supportive housing because of this intervention? I don't know the answer to that. I just, you know, this is something that the county is really interested in. Performance metrics, that if we're making this type of investment, and we believe this intervention is worthy, what should we expect? You know, we should expect that we should lower numbers. I know that it is high, right? So I don't depend, and I do, I do sort of, you know, to name something that probably don't, it's uncomfortable to name. We don't want people to move to supportive housing only to relapse and need to come back, because the housing is so good, right? I mean, these are, you know, not perfect places, I'm sure, but for some, this is a pretty nice place.
It would be probably nicer than any place they've lived for quite some time in their lives.
And so how do we, how do we focus on the need there? Say an incentive, but you, you understand what I'm saying? So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that at all.
I think it's interesting that you ask that. I think, I will tell you, for us, the question that you're asking, and the reason why we're probably saying we're not sure, is when clients leave us, unless they stay in treatment with us, we can't tell you where they are. And a lot of that comes from the confidentiality law, the federal confidentiality law. So as long as they're engaging with services with us, we know where they are, what they're doing, how engaged they are, what supports they're receiving in the community. Once they leave our treatment, whether they've completed their treatment episode, they've decided they want to seek treatment somewhere else by choice, which is also a good thing, we don't know where they go. So it's really hard for us to tell you that. I mean, because it's something we can't collect because of the confidentiality law.
But this situation would give you the opportunity to collect different data, additional data, because they would be, you would be responsible for them.
We would know that where they are.
Yes. So, yeah, that would be very interesting to see. What, what metrics are you measuring for? Looking for, what do you expect to be able to accomplish with, with the housing?
And we might be able to see just general decline in substance abuse in Douglas County. I mean, that's the idea. Longer span of treatment should reduce the total number of substance abuse.
That, that would be true. I think we could also look at, of those clients who come back to us, recidivism, relapse, likely look at those numbers as well. Also knowing that relapse is part of the recovery process, so I wouldn't, I would don't want to be careful about how we look at relapse numbers. I'm not looking, looking at that as solely a negative indicator, because it is part of the process. Sometimes we're looking at how far between relapse, that it's longer, because it's a journey. So I think there are some things. So I think there are some things that we could begin to look at for me- metrics around how to track where I think you all are trying to go with measuring. Not sure we spent a lot of time thinking about that. So that gives us something to go back and think about.
As we've talked about the Treatment Recovery Center, that is something key performance. So if we're spending money, we said the same thing with global crisis response, you know, like what are those indicators we're looking for? If this is coming from that, it's those types of work.
Treatment indicators we, we have. It's the housing indicators that I think with us moving into this environment for the first time, might have to experiment a little bit about what numbers really make sense to, to track the metrics.
I'm sure there are other local partners that have, to this would be happy to help you, including partnering with an organization to, to be the landlord. What this I think would probably, I imagine that folks that you would engage for that would also have worked in the space.
Yes, they would.
I would hope that it would affect, that we would see those results too in other places like behavioral health courts, successful completions and drug court, successful completions and recidivism in the jail, you know, returning, you know, picking up new charges, going back to jail, going to the, hopefully going to the TRC, you know, be reduced for these people in these homes. I think there are some other numbers too that other entities keep that hopefully we would be able to see that, you know, making a difference.
And having my research connection helps kind of track, track those as well. Those absolutely could be some metrics we could look at and think about how how to use those to measure success of the housing and the support.
Yeah. And I want to encourage, and this is as much for the community as you are, data is just data. It doesn't say whether you've done it right or wrong. It just tells us, do we need to make adjustments to it? What are we learning? Because behind every data point is an individual story about an individual person and their family and all those things. But I think it's really important that we don't say, well, we have to hit this. Otherwise, we're not successful. That, that isn't true, right? It just tells us, what are we looking at? How are we looking at it from marginalized population, you know, and those things that I know you're looking at as well?
I thought about your comment, which is why I said earlier, we've not done this. So I, I envision there will be some experimenting in what metrics we measure. And to your point, what, what's behind that data? Does that really tell the story? Or does it tell a different story? I know that sometimes when we start tracking metrics, we track a story we didn't think we, we thought we knew what story we were tracking. And after it was all over, it was a different story. So I anticipate there will be several attempts at getting to the metrics that we're trying to get at. And yes, I think there are some things we can learn from partners. And I think there will be things that are a little bit different about this particular housing effort that we will likely need to learn how to measure well.
Talk about the housing itself a little bit again. I noticed you have garages on your.
We're not sure that we will have garages. I said, this is kind of a, a general idea. Do you have comments about a garage?
Have comments about that in terms of, you know, housing people is the priority. And yet in our culture, we tend to house automobiles in the space that could have held another person or another bedroom. And so just especially in a transitional home, it's not like it's, you know, 15 winters where the car is sitting out or something. I think that in, in my mind, you know, dollar for dollar, housing for people is more important.
I would agree with you. So there's been a little bit of internal conversation in our agency about garages, no garages. I, I, I share, I share that. I also think when you have garages, they're not actually designed for people to live in them. And sometimes that's what happens. And with having children, I just want to make sure that everybody has space to live safely in our unit. So all that to say, what you're seeing is a start and not a finish. And garages are things that we've talked a lot about.
That would be storm shelters. It's probably been a discussion also.
So that, so two things with storm shelters. That is one reason why we want to build the community center is that it would, it wouldn't be a basement, but it would be more of a hardened shell, storm shelter. We do have it also with the women's facility being there, we talked about how to make provision for people in the housing unit should there be implement weather open 24/7 so we could get them there as well. So if we can build the community center and have the funding to do that, well, we would have a closer location. We would still have a location less than a hundred away that we would work out the details to have the residents come there.
And a lot of small units use the interior bathroom and just harden that for, too, as another alternative. The others that we have, we, the Midwest has a love affair with single family homes and duplexes are like the next best thing. But, but really, you know, a lot of places in the world, the multifamily is, is pretty normal and, and maybe even better in terms of community, in terms of having a community space attached to it, something like that. So just throw the doors wide open and see what, what feels like the best model that it doesn't have to look like what we've always done, houses and duplexes. That's my thoughts. One other though, I, I do like that you have this, you know, 450,000 that you're talking about for these, earmarked for these longer term repairs. And, and just in terms of numbers, when you have that kind of turnover in a rental, and that's not about populations being served or anything like that. It's just there are more people, more turnover that they, units have more wear and tear and need to be have larger renovations on a shorter timeframe than most rentals would. And so it's just, it's good that you're already thinking ahead for that and managing because I, I work with organizations that do a little bit of transitional housing. It's always hard, but also that when we, when you don't make provisions for that, then that becomes a drain on the programming. So I'm really glad to see that already ahead of that.
That was, we worked with the Douglas County Community Foundation when we were first putting our plan together. And my friendship laser told me, if you're smart, you will raise the money on the first, on the front end and invest that and, and some sort of an endowment or protected fund so that it will help you longer term. And he also told me that not very many people take his advice. So because he's my buddy, I note that I took his advice.
Lori, I was going to ask, I know you mentioned that you've been working on the pro forma. Do you have a an operating cost per unit? It's a rough, rough number.
So we're working, that's where I say it's not done yet.
Yeah.
An agency in town that we think can help us figure that out because we're, we're new in this work. We could maybe put that number together. I would rather it be based on more more experience of someone who's done housing in this particular environment. So we're still working with, with that agency to get cost per unit so that we can figure out what, what we need in the pro forma. So yes, we're working on it and we don't have an answer.
Okay. And I would just, again, I thought, I, I'm going to keep referring to the CSH needs assessment. They provided a really nice analysis of what we can, what you, we could expect those operating impacts would be just to, just set expectations. And so those are the things that, that we think about.
Absolutely.
And we worked through the same thing with, with Burt Nash on transitions. It's a different setup. But we worked through the same thing with Burt Nash. And so I would just say that we spent a lot of time working through that with Burt Nash on the, on the transitions campus. But at the end of the day, it was really successful.
We know we have a lot to learn in this space. So Burt Nash has definitely been an organization we've been talking with as well as an organization in Wichita that's doing some similar kinds of housing, but it's more multifamily apartment complex. So we're trying to gather information, yes, poring over the report, trying to use as many pieces of information we think we can pull together. And that's where we are, pulling all those pieces together to try to figure out what, what strings to pull and how to put that, that whole picture together. My board wants it too.
Yeah. And I would just say, you know, the, the operating model as, as a community, that's a challenge that we have within the Housing and Homeless Stakeholders Focus, our work group. And this, we have a supportive housing work group that Michael Montgomery on your team participates in and thinking about another, again, one of the recommendations that's in the CSH report that talks about flexible funding pools. And what is that? Because if you don't have, if you're serving a population of folks that are not going to be able to access any of the existing funds, how are you, how are you going to fund that as a community are, is what you're going to have to figure out. And flexible funding pools using non HUD funds basically is one of the strategies. But I, I do think that to meet that need, it's, it's going to have to be a hybrid public-private partnership. So I know that that's just, that's one of the things that we're working on in the supportive housing work group. So we can operationalize when these units are online, whether it's these units or the units that other partners have under development are planning for. We have to have a plan to operationalize them.
We continue to look as well, pretty aggressively at some foundations that have identified housing and homelessness, as you might guess, across Kansas and the nation. And so we continue to look at, are there some opportunities to do some seed funding with some foundations and then build in more of those flexible funds? I think everybody is, I shouldn't say everybody, a lot of communities are facing this particular issue. And I'm not sure there are a lot of resources around the flexible funding piece to copy or emulate or duplicate. There are some in much larger urban areas. I'm not sure if those models are readily transferable to our work. As I look at them, I'm not saying I have it all figured out, but I've, I've spent a little bit of time analyzing some of that because we're sitting in a place with a lot of our clients who will not, or traditional public.
Well, and I would, I think getting to some questions a few minutes ago from the commissioners around what kind of outcomes you can expect. I think impact based, some impact experience, experiments are one of the other, that was one of the other recommendations in the, in the study and some larger impact models have been executed in communities like Denver on the chronically homeless population. So I think that, again, that's another recommendation that the supportive housing work group is going to be looking at is could we come up with some impact investment experience, experiments where you are able to attract a foundation to help fund the, if you are able to have the impact that you estimate that you'll have, that's something that Corporation for Supportive Housing can attract those potential investors and those foundations to pay attention to potential projects that the, again, those are the things that we're thinking about because it's the only way we're going to be able to make progress.
We have identified an organization in California that does some similar kinds of housing that we're proposing. So we would like to engage with them more. I do know some of the supports that California has and their public site are very different than what Kansas has. So as I've read some of their material, not talked to anybody yet, but as I've read some of their material, I'm like, we don't have that. We don't have that. And we don't have that. And so I want to talk to them, but I also know the environment of their public funding mechanisms are very, very different than we have.
Yeah.
State. And so we'll, we'll do some, some research on, on that particular entity as well, hoping to learn some things that might be out.
Really excited to see particular experience into transitional housing. And of course, we need lots more units and lots more organizations to, to try this out. And we're all going to learn from each other and no anticipation that that has to be, there is no perfect outcomes. And this is, it is a, a game of, you know, how can we help? Help some, help as many as we can and, and give ourselves grace when we can't do it perfectly. But I'm, I'm excited to see, to see what you're going to be able to do with these, these homes. So I'd like to keep talking about it. Thank you.
Echo that. And, and I would, I want to reinforce something Commissioner Willie said earlier, thinking about, how can we make the most of the dollars that we have? And when I'm thinking about the space that you have, that beautiful space out of Lakeview, you know, there, there isn't some of the concerns that might come if we were building multifamily, you know, and there's some low level multifamily that might, you know, you mentioned California, that's where I happened to grow up. So I'm just in my head thinking about units that are, or, or sick, you know, that aren't large spaces that may still provide. You know, if we could, you know, double what we had, or maybe just some units are double, you know, and just thinking about that as a wide variety. So it's really unique, the amount of space that you have out there.
We have a lot of space. Not, not always, not as much as you might think because we have the, the flood plain back there.
Certainly, yeah. But I think it does prevent a little bit of a buffer between some of the neighborhood concerns that often pop up around multifamily housing. So
Fourplex, fiveplex model is, is pretty nice as far as utilizing your shared walls for shared utilities and it's less expensive and you're less exterior siding, that sort of thing. So it's just a, a way to be, be, to, to make, make a choice with the land as well as the dollars.
Because my worry is once we build it, we'll fill it and then we'll need more, you know, and we should have thought of that, you know. The other thing to think about transportation and I know you're both familiar with artists helping the homeless and sort of how they've dealt with transportation. You know, being a major concern, I know first steps on that bus route. But you're also talking about childcare and what happens when they're old enough not to be in childcare and to get to schools and, and get to work. And, you know, is there some other opportunities around that?
So we, we currently have a great relationship with Sunflower Elementary because we have women that come from out of Douglas County and we appreciate that partnership. We literally can walk kids into the front door and they can be enrolled that day if they showed up at our center the day before. And we, I mean, we appreciate that so much. They also will bring their bus right down, right into our facility. So there might be some conversation we could continue to have with Sunflower to help with that particular piece. And there, as we continue to talk with Positive Bright Start, depending on how this goes, are there some after school kinds of care that they could incorporate into the childcare setting? So that our families would have that support if they're working till six or whatever that right magic time is that you have to pick up children in childcare. I think there are lots of opportunities that are, to your point, that our site offers that other sites don't. So our seclusion is huge. It also protects the ongoing confidentiality of our clients. It's one reason why we wanted to do it on that site. We have a good partnership with Positive Bright Start. So I do think there are opportunities for us to think through some other options. And our school district partnership is just key. So I think we already have those markings of some really good connection points. We also are continuing to expand our, our peer employment or number of employees that too can become, not that we want them peers driving them all over town, but there are options for our peers to help connect them through transportation that we could provide to help connect them to services and ongoing supports. So we've talked a little bit about how we might expand those partnerships.
And you have your main residential campus and then you have the additional land just to the east of that that was recently annexed. Is that where the housing is likely to be built or is it part of the original footprint?
The housing is actually going on our original footprint. So it's going down a little bit further. It will literally be, we have a separate entrance into our childcare right now. So we will expand that entrance to the east and build a bit of a cul-de-sac. And that's our plan. We would not, we have to have a fire truck turnaround. So the cul-de-sac becomes our fire truck turnaround space. Emergency vehicle, not just fire trucks. I think fire trucks are really big. That's why I always say that. The idea is that we would not build on the end of that cul-de-sac and leave it open for potential expansion later on. So we're not ready to expand yet. We like to take small bites and do it as well as we can before we take big bites and maybe drown ourselves in all the details. So that's, we're trying to take small bites to start with and be successful. So four to six, eight to 10 units feels like a lot to us. I know it's not a lot in the world of need in Douglas County, but it feels like a lot for us when we've not done this before.
It's a lot in the, in the manner of service though. It's a lot to take on.
Well, thank you so much for coming today.
Commissioners, I was just going to say also that I think what, the timing of this presentation, I think, and, and where the project is. And as Lori said, that's some additional work needs to be done on the pro forma. From a timing perspective, and Sarah and I talked about this as well, you may see this come up as part of the budget process as a fresh conversation. And that might be a more streamlined time to make decisions if the timing is right. So, yeah.
As we put the pro forma together, we're, we're not anywhere close to breaking ground right now. And so I think the flexibility of the budgeting process and the timing of it perhaps sets us in a place where we would be in a better place to give more definite answers about what we're planning as we continue to fine tune our.
Yeah, and I would just say that based on the experience with Burt Nash and working through that pro forma with them and building, you know, myself, Sarah, Bob, you know, we're, we're happy to participate and, you know, as much as possible if it's helpful.
Okay, with that, we will close this portion of our meeting and we will reconvene at 5:30. Thank you.